I mean, I can't even see my face going across the top. To see that I'm upside down.
All right, all, we are live streaming.
We have a quorum yet?
Think we should.
See that I'm upside down.
All right, all, we are live streaming. Oops.
We have a quorum yet?
Seven.
Uh, yes, we have one, two, three.
Yes.
Four, five, six.
I believe the eight.
Seven.
Good. Well, I will start us then. Uh, gavel, gavel, the meeting will come to order. The time is now five thirty-two P M on Monday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairman of the Commission of the Arts Humanities. I'm an African American man, African American man wearing a white shirt. I will now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer present. Commissioner Sims. Commissioner Habadi, Haban, Mano, Habamanisara, sorry, I can't talk today.
It's okay, present.
Sorry, Commissioner Masters Berry.
Here, present.
Commissioner, Commissioner Butler.
Present.
Mr. Warden.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Present.
Commissioner Kim. Commissioner Breenza.
Present.
Commissioner Minkiti. Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner Stedman. I thought Dave was here.
It says apologies, but I'm not able to be on screen this evening, but he's in the chat.
Good. So I think we have a quorum. A quorum is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session and is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at OpenGovOffice@DC.gov. Notice that the meeting was posted on the DC Register, on the Commission's website, DCRS.DC.gov, and on the DC Office of Open Government's Central Meetings Calendar at Open-D-C.gov. The meeting is being conducted in a virtual format with commissioners joining remotely using the Zoom meeting platform. The meeting is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. Is there any objection to the agenda and meeting minutes that were previously circulated? Here, no objection to the agenda for this meeting and minutes from the previous meeting stand as adopted. Aside from voting on the minutes, there is one item on the agenda to vote on today during the Governance Committee Report. If there are any other items, please let us know now. Any other items for voting? Uh, I'll now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been, I'm sorry, we begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. Uh, we stand on the ancestral lands of the Kachintank and the Piscataway people. We pay respects to the elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Good evening, everyone, and welcome, and thank you for joining us virtually. We have an interesting meeting this evening with reports from the Director, the Finance Committee, the Governance Committee, Grants Committee, Public Arts Committee, and the Arts Education Committee. Tonight, we'll be hearing from Abby Allison McLean, one of the curators behind our Queer Art Salon Exhibition and the Executive Director of the Touchstone Gallery. Uh, so should we start with the presentation? Ms. McLean?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Abby Allison McLean. And, um, as mentioned, I'm one of the co-founders and curators of the Queer Art Salon, and I also serve as the Executive Director of Touchstone Gallery and Touchstone Foundation for the Arts. Um, I'm here today to talk to you about Queer Art Salon, which is, um, a arts exhibition grant recipient. Um, we opened the show just this past Friday, June thirteenth. Um, it was a wonderful reception with lots of attendance. Um, and the show will be up in the Commission Gallery through August first. So we do encourage you to go out and take a look, see all of the incredible artwork, as well as some of our online resources, which I'll talk a little bit more about tonight. Um, but a little bit more about the Queer Art Salon generally, this is our third year. My co-founder, Ashley J. Williams, and I wanted to create a program that allowed queer artists of all types, uh, visual artists, to showcase their work, um, work that didn't necessarily play on their queer identity, though it was welcome to, but really to show just the wide range of queer art and artists, as well as celebrate and champion queer artists. We were so, so happy to be awarded this arts exhibition grant for twenty twenty-five. Um, this show is incredible. Uh, as I said, QAS was an ongoing program that we just kind of came up with and we've found space for. Um, but the grant has really enabled us to do this in a much larger, bigger, and more thoughtful way. Um, we were able to offer artist stipends for the first time. We were able to get our artists' headshots and documentation of their work. Um, again, we didn't have to sort of scrounge and beg for a space. The space is included. So having this grant really allowed us to both, uh, scale this project and to really give it the credit that we think this art and these artists deserve. Um, I'll just screen share. Send a request to screen share, um. So there's QR codes in the exhibition that link to our website. And on the site, you'll find images of all of the artwork. And when you select one of the images, it will tell you a little bit more about the art and artist. Um, there's, there's twenty-nine artists, so there's lots of artists to look at and learn from, to learn about these specific pieces, as well as what the artist is doing. If you really like a work, connect with them on Instagram. That's all listed there. Uh, we know that while what we're doing here is this, uh, summer exhibition, that it doesn't stop here. We want you to know about these artists. We want you to, if you have opportunities, share them with these artists. If you're looking to, you know, purchase some great art or showcase it at your art space, uh, then we'd love for you to know all about these great artists. Um, this is a project that we do want to continue, and we hope will continue to scale up. Um, but our twenty twenty-five, uh, art and artists are on, available online. There's a virtual exhibition, um, there's translations in Spanish, American Vietnamese, and Braille. Um, and probably tomorrow, we'll launch our visual descriptive tour, um, which includes not just text that a screen reader can read, but also, um, artist or curator descriptions, so that if you are blind or visually impaired, you're able to still experience the exhibition. So that's a little bit about the Queer Art Salon. Again, I'm a little biased, but I think the show is absolutely fantastic and hope you all get a chance to check it out.
Well, thank you very much. It is an amazing exhibition. So for those listening online, we really, really encourage you to come by and see it and experience it. So thank you so much, uh, for putting that together and for your leadership here.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Uh, we can move on to the public comment portion. Uh, we have two, uh, people providing public comments today, uh, Johnny McCain and Marjorie Goldberg. They signed up for this, uh, this meeting. The Commission welcomes your comments. They're very important to us. Please note that comments are limited to three minutes. Uh, please address your remarks to the Chair and note that we will not be engaging into dialogue at this time. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the Commission, about your views. If members of the public have factual questions, staff will be glad to follow up via email. So when I call your name, you may begin your comments, and we'll start with Mr. McCain. Is Mr. McCain online?
I don't believe they're present.
Good. Uh, Ms. Goldberg? Is Marjorie here?
I don't believe Ms. Goldberg is here, too. They have the, they have.
She, she, she texted that she may be in the gallery or somewhere of that nature. See if she's.
No, she's not. She's not in the attendee space. Um. Hmm. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll see if she joins, um, and we'll, we'll let you know. I'll shoot you a note, but. Right now, she's not on.
Okay, um, before we go into the Executive Director's report, I just want to make a few comments on a highlight of last week, which was our budget oversight hearing, which was held on Friday. Um, over thirty testimonies were given by our constituents. Uh, in overwhelmingly in support of C A H, support for, um, our budget not to be reduced, especially in these times of difficulty for so many arts organizations, and emphasis on the importance of the arts at moments like this, and how oftentimes when budgets are being cut, the arts are the victims of that. So we've had overwhelming support of the work we're doing and the work. There were some concerns that people raised, in particular, there was some concern around Art Week DC that it not be a distraction, uh, on the part of the Arts Commission. And we reinforced in our testimony that in that particular place that the Art Week DC really will be heavy lifting from the private sector and not from C A H, that we played a convener and a sort of initiating catalyst role and trying to get that organized, but the plan is certainly for, uh, the private sector to drive that, not C A H. Uh, and there may be some comments that, uh, Aaron will make in the Executive Director's report as well, but I wanted to just make that observation about the budget oversight hearing. And some of you all may have watched it, and I hope you had the same conclusion that I did. Uh, with that, we'll go to the Executive Director's report now, Aaron.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Aaron Myers. I'm the Executive Director for the DC Commission of the Arts and Humanities. I would like to begin the directed report by offering condolences on behalf of the agency to the husband, the family, friends, colleagues, and the artistic community who are mourning the loss of our collections registrar, Ron Herpenstern. Ron, as he was known to the agency, played a vital role in ensuring the care of our collection was a priority. The agency has heard over the last few weeks about his impact upon new directors and employees of DC government whose first encounter at curation was going art shopping with Ron. Ron's contribution resulted in the continued trust between artists of the community and the agency because of his consistent and genuine care. So much more could be said, but we invite our staff, commissioners, and community to visit the Ice Street Gallery and reflect around an installment included in the current exhibition, Queer Art Salon, centered on his contributions to the agency and community. In his honor, quarterly, the Office of the C A H Director will recognize an employee for their diligence to, uh, duty and dedication to the agency. This award will also include eight hours of leave, which would be considered a time off award. As the Executive Director, I will select the first award, and the remainder will be selected as outlined in our initiative, uh, incentive awards policy. The first to receive this award will be C A H Office Manager Carolyn Parker. Mrs. Parker has the longest tenure at C A H, and her calm hand and steady head both encourage and support the staff at the agency. I would like to acknowledge the public art team for their support of Ron while on his health journey. As director, it brings me joy in knowing, in our last communication, Ron spoke of the joy he experienced working with this team. If we could just take a moment for, uh, Ron, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you. And as I said in an earlier meeting, that certainly expresses the feelings of the commissioners as well. This is a great loss to the institution, and we felt it both professionally and personally. And, uh, this award that you're putting forth is very important. Thank you for that. And our congratulations to Mrs. Parker, because we know she's a stalwart supporter and been there for a very long time and has taught me so much in my time as Chair, so thank you for all of that.
Thank you very much. And the commissioners. Ooh, we're getting another call. And the commissioners will have a joint commissioners retreat, uh, June twenty-third to twenty-fourth. Uh, the C A H management team will join the retreat on the twenty-third. Um, and then the commissioners will be together, as they've done, as they did in twenty-three, I believe, uh, alone on the twenty-fourth. These retreats have proven to be moments of reflection and also a time to connect with one another on the centered goal of how to support one another as we work to support the creative economy of Washington DC. Tomorrow, six seventeen, after meeting with the facilitator, further instructions will be sent out to the commissioners. Uh, and just so you all know, um, this process has been made a little bit more difficult due to the waiver process here and trying to get things approved. We had dates go back and forth. And, uh, thank you, Reggie, for being able to be flexible on your end, uh, so that we can make sure this is, this happens. I find this to be probably one of the most important things we do as a commission because it gives us an opportunity to learn how to support each other as we're supporting the community. Um, so I'll just say that. Um, we'll now go to our budget oversight hearing. The Committee of the Whole held its budget oversight hearing for the DC Commission on the Arts and Humanities on Friday, June thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth, at nine thirty A M at the Johnny Wilson Building. The meeting was a hybrid and had thirty-three witnesses who signed up to testify. To find the impact of the mayor's proposed budget to C A H, search F Y twenty-six budget hearing. Again, search F Y twenty-six budget hearing on our website to view supplemental budget materials, providing an analysis from our team. And I'd ask if, uh, someone from our team could just put that link in the, uh, chat for, uh, those who are watching to have. As a quick overview, the proposed F Y twenty-six budget of forty-five million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and eight dollars marks a ten point two percent decrease in the agency's overall budget from F Y twenty-four, which is inclusive of the fund balance appropriation, to F Y twenty-six. Since, should C A H's nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar grant from the N E A be rescinded, the overall decrease would rise to twelve point one percent. The proposed F Y twenty-six budget stipulates the C A H would no longer accumulate surplus tax revenue to be dispersed to the community in subsequent years, eliminating our, eliminating our fund balance. The fund balance helps ensure the agency can financially fulfill all the grants awarded by the agency in case economic projections decline. The fund balance helped posture the agency to support the community during the pandemic. We've used the funds successfully to help offer grant enhancements, uh, support administrative expenses, and this year requested use of the funds to support a capacity building program to aid mid to large-sized organizations and how to diversify their sponsor revenue models. We've requested use of F Y twenty-five's current fund balance, but have not been issued confirmation that we will have access to it. The proposed F Y twenty-six budget does not add any additional F T Es to the agency. Also included was an amendment to the F Y twenty-five Budget Support Act, reallocating dollars of C A H's large cap grant to the Howard Theater, the Lincoln Theater, the National Theater. This reallocation was not done in coordination with C A H and will have to be voted on by the council. Looking at grants, and this is an important deadline I want everyone to pay attention to. July first will be the cutoff for those who have not submitted all necessary paperwork to receive their award. If you are a grantee who has not received their award, please reach out to your grant manager or contact the office so that we can ensure you have all the necessary paperwork completed before July first. So I just want to say, July first is the cutoff. The reason, one of the reasons why is that we, these grants are thought to anticipate how the agency would be supporting you throughout the year. And at this point, uh, by July first, I think it's pretty clear that, uh, this is not going to be able, uh, to work. Um, and, and the other agencies across the government, uh, no one has had an extension this late. So we'll be probably moving it up much earlier in F Y twenty-six, just as a heads up. Lastly, the strategic plan, C A H has provided the waivers, uh, to the Office of Contract and Procurement to continue their work posting the strategic plan. We are now awaiting for the confirmation of the posting and that proposals are being accepted. Again, we provided the proposals. They've asked for, they've asked for a dis, additional, um, waiver confirmation from, uh, the Office of the City Administrator, and those have not yet come. So, uh, we are just posture ready to go and been ready for a few months now. So if there's any other questions, I'm here to answer.
Any questions on the commissioners? Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Uh, before I move on, I see that Marjorie Goldberg is with us. And so we'll go back and, uh, hear a public comment from Marjorie. Ms. Goldberg? You're on mute.
Hi, there.
Greetings.
Hi. Um, let me just get rid of this thing. Um, yeah, there, so. Anyway, um, with you all, um, I sent all of you some information over the weekend. I don't know how many of you have a chance to look at it, um, about, uh, God, one more spam call I don't need. Oh, God, anyway. About, um, my final project that I want to do, which is a senior artist living community. Um, my first, uh, art center, when I was, I founded when I was twenty-six years old, a couple of years ago, um, had fifty artist studios. Um, it, it had been the Washington Bible College, and then it was the International School of Law. Um, we moved in in nineteen eighty, nineteen seventy-eight, and it was literally ten years after the riots were on Fourteenth Street. We were a half a block from Fourteenth Street. Um, and so also the Dance Exchange came there and Studio Theater. So three, as I say, three Jewish women kind of started the art scene of, uh, Fourteenth Street. And we were there for nine years. Um, people still come up to me and say, best parties ever. Anyway, we loved being there. Um, you know, art, and I still represent many of those artists today. Uh, we love working together, and, and Washington was even more of a city of suits back then than it is today. Um, and so just to be able to be surrounded by artists all of the time and, you know, night or day, being able to get somebody's opinion, help you do this, do that, was an unbelievable experience. So now for my final project in life, I want to build a senior artist community where artists can live, work, show, perform. Um, you know, I'm, I'm obviously heavily into the visual arts, but this should be for all the arts, music, dance, theater. So, and I know a lot of the people that run these organizations, and I'm wanting to put a committee together um, about this, and I'm talking to a lot of real estate developers. I've spoken to, um, Nina Alpert, who runs Demped. And, you know, everybody I've talked to thinks this is a great idea. There's three major development sites in DC. One is at R F K. That's the biggest. It's a hundred and seventy-five acres. Then there's Hill East, and there's Poplar Point. Um, two of the three, I think, are on the water. So we could even have like a riverboat filled with art and music that could, you know, that could take people down the river and, you know, have a, you know, a creative riverboat. And, um, but it could have a DC museum. It should have theaters. It could be sculpture gardens. Um, I've designed a lot of it, a lot of the, especially the living space, but even the studio space could all be in the round. Because, as we all know, um, as people get older, they sometimes get Alzheimer's. And, um, number one, Alzheimer's, people don't like corners. And the, and the other way, if you're in the round in their own private rooms, and people can buy their, their, um, want to set this up so people can buy their own, you know, where they live. Uh, but it's part of a, a bigger complex where the middle will be where people eat and, and it'll be the community area. Then there'll be, um, corridors, and then each people will have where they live, like spokes on a wheel. You could have a picture of yourself in a mirror on your door in case you kind of forget, then you'll know where you live. But, um, anyway, so this is something I'm actively pursuing, um, with the city and talking to a bunch of developers. But clearly, um, you know, as I say to people, artists don't retire. You know, people say, when are you going to retire? Artists don't retire. Lawyers and doctors and everybody else retires and become artists. You know, artists do not retire. So, um, we want to be together. We want to keep creating. And, you know, there could be woodshops and metal shops and painting studios and photography studios and dance studios and all of this, and I think would be a model for the country and an incredible draw. We have master classes, performances. We could finally build a DC museum. Um, so this is something I wanted to share with all of you. Um, I also shared one other thing with all the women, um, who are commission, on the commission and either work for the commission or commissioners. Um, probably some of you are familiar with Art Table. And Art Table's having an event here on Wednesday night, um, from five thirty to seven. And so I just sent an invitation to all of the women who are on the commission because this is an international women's organization of curators and museum personnel and, you know, women in the arts. Not just, it's not artists, but it's, I mean, even though I am, but, but it's all, you know, for all people who curate art, and it's worldwide. Um, and they're having an event here, so I invited all the women. Um, and they can look up what Art Table is if they don't know. Um, but it's a, it's a good group and, um, worth attending, and I'd love to have you all here. But, um, so Aaron, how would you like to be on my committee? Is that a yes?
I could engage in these moments, but we appreciate what you're having to say and now follow the lead of, uh, uh, our chairperson.
Okay, and, um, so, yeah, so that's the concept. And, you know, uh, our administration, anybody in the arts, you know, and, and if it's a couple, only one of the people has to be in the art. The one thing I'm gonna, my concept wants to, um, have as part of the agreement to move in there. Uh, you could, you can buy and sell your unit. But, um, I want, if, when you pass away, I'd like you to leave your equipment behind. Um, now, this is more for visual artists, you know, like my woodshop, you know, I'm not taking it with me. You know, uh, not the mobile one, but the stationary one. And, um, so it'd be good, you know, if artists would do that, but, um.
So, Marjorie, I guess my question is, and perhaps the answer is obvious. What role do you see C A H playing in creating this city program?
Yes, I am gonna, I'm hoping I'm gonna apply for, um, your, uh, building community grant. And, um, that is gonna be for, you know, like hiring an architect and, and, you know, starting the ball rolling and, um, uh, you know, starting this project. I'm, I'm going to events this week where I'm gonna meet other real estate developers and people like that. So it, this is one of these projects with, out of doubt, it will take a village, but it's for a village. It's both of the artists and the whole community and for everybody to come to. Um, so.
Oh, good.
Yes, that's, my first ask is, you know, on, on the building community piece.
So we'll look, we'll look forward to the grant application.
Okay, thanks, Reg.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. You're doing a great job, you know, and as I said to the, um, when I, when I spoke at the, um.
The budget oversight.
Yeah, that, you know, you guys have done things that no other commission has done. Uh, you know, I was a commissioner for two terms. I was a treasurer for two terms, two years. And we never threw events for all the artists in the city, um, to come and meet each other. And you guys do that, and I, I actually think that's fabulous because, you know, ever since the pandemic, people are more isolated. I think artists are less isolated than most people. But, um, so I think that's a wonderful thing. My other two little points here are.
You know, you know, you're over your time, Marjorie, but I'll, I'll let you say them quickly.
Okay, I'll say them quickly. I've said them over and over. Um, we're the only city in the country without a percentage for art program for private developers, and we're the only city in the country that doesn't have a complete one, even though it was signed in the law in nineteen eighty-six. I can, everybody, the document, Marion Barry and Dave Clark signed a one percent for all buildings built by the District of Columbia, and it's never been implemented. Only through the schools and Sandy Bellamy and D G S, which Marion helped put in the, he, he did that through the D G S and Brian Hanlon. But other than that, every other building built in DC has not had art, and every building built by private developers, some do. I've sold a lot to developers, but, you know, you think they're gonna leave the city because you make them spend one or, one percent or a half a percent on art? I kind of don't think so.
Well, and, and as you know, we've had this conversation a number of times with you, and we're, we're trying to see what can be done.
I appreciate it.
But thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Has, has Mr. McCain come on? If not, I'll go on to the committee reports. But thank you again, Marjorie. Uh, finance, finance report is, Janet's here or Brandon, will you cover that?
Uh, hi, Reggie. So, good, good evening, everyone. Brandon Saunders, here, I'm gonna cover it. Uh, my name is Brandon Saunders. I'm the Resource Allocation Officer. I'm wearing a, uh, great charcoal gray polo. Um, and as always, I'm happy to present, um, our finance committee report. Unfortunately, actually, for the first time, um, in my tenure, we actually missed, uh, the finance committee for a good reason. All of our meetings, our meetings are, are pre-planned, and our meeting is, uh, what's happened to be in our budget oversight here. They got bumped back to Friday the 13th. And so, but we were still able to, um, as the report will show, and I will, we'll dive into it, um, as we can go into the next slide. We were still able to, uh, dive into and kind of provide some analysis on where things are at as of June 11. Um, just for everyone's situational awareness. Uh, one thing that's new to the report this, uh, this month is a column called Budget Reservations. And that is the, I guess, second column from the, from the left. Um, for about 881,000. That represents the amount of money that essentially the, the agency had to, um, that was reduced by the agency that we had to give back essentially to, um, the city as a part of MPS cuts and certain, um, rescinded grants and certain personal services as well. And so, um, just kind of wanted to highlight that overall. In comparison to a lot of other agencies, we actually, according to our AFO, uh, our Agency Fiscal Officer did very well. And so it represents a, a great, um, capacity that the agency showed this year to obligate funds and to distribute and disseminate, you know, overall. So, um, good job on behalf of, um, on behalf of the agency and everyone who's involved, um, in terms of that process. Now, as you can also see, and directing back into the table, um, to the bottom right, the full available balance is 16 point, about 16.5%. So we still are relatively still on pace to, um, close the year out, pay, at, at, on, on the right pace. We can move on to the next slide. And so, um, as always, this slide is a further categorical breakdown of the administrative services budget. Here you'll find not just the personnel services at the very top, but a lot of the other categories, such as supplies and contracts, um, security, et cetera, uh, overall. And at the bottom, where we are at 31.65%, this budget, more so than a grain size, is a little bit more, uh, was a little bit more affected by the mayoral order, in which we were essentially under control in terms of what we could and couldn't spend from our current spend plan allocation. Uh, again, in comparison to other agencies, we, we did pretty well in terms of our flexibility and what we're going to, uh, be able to spend. Not, it didn't affect basically overall, overall objectives and missions to accomplish that. Um, however, there was, you know, parts of the budget that applied for everyone and reduced, um, non-discriminatory in a way. So we can move on to the next slide. And so, uh, here's even further breakdown of the subcategories to the main category. So overall, I won't dive too much into it because essentially, um, the same as the last slide, with a little bit more details. But those who are a little bit more inquisitive can see the further breakdown of all those different categories. And then we can move to the last slide. And so this is the breakdown of our current grants program. Um, again, just to kind of reiterate, we, we, everything that was essentially, um, reduced in our budget. So from that, that budget reservations line, we're rescind, we're essentially rescinding the grants. And so, uh, I believe Director Myers mentioned earlier of a July 1st or in the month of July deadline. And so we really want to be mindful of that so that we can just, uh, distribute payments in an efficient manner and not to disrupt, um, you know, just how the agency needs to close the year and potentially have to, um, plan for funds next year. So, long story, less long, as I like to say, um, let's just please, um, uh, try to get all paperwork in so that we can have payments disseminated. And if you need help, uh, just please reach out. Um, that's all I have to share, um, for the, for this evening. And as always, I'm happy to answer any questions that we may have, anybody may have.
Yes, any questions from commissioners? I will add that, um, in, in Brandon's report, uh, first, it's clear that we as an agency are not tone deaf over the economics of the city and the economics of this country and the need to cut costs where, and programs where necessary. Um, our management of funds, as he said before, is admirable relative to many other agencies. So once again, we're doing the best we can under these conditions. Uh, we want to continue the efficient distribution of the funds. And we continue to work on improving our ability to get the funds out to the right people as fast as possible. And we are trying our best to continue our programs, even in spite of budget cuts. So this agency is really trying to stand up to that which is our mission and our, our goal uh, in light of the current environment, but not being tone deaf to the current environment. Brandon, does that, that reflect where we are financially?
Uh, very well said, Reggie. Uh, thank you for that.
Good, good. Any other questions from commissioners? Uh, thank you, thank you, Brandon. While we go on to governance, Julianne?
Good evening. My name is, uh, Julianne. I'm Commissioner Brienza, and I am a white woman who is having her 50th birthday this Saturday. So after this meeting, I will now say that I am a 50-year-old white woman. The Governance Committee presents the description of our new Commissioner Committee for Vote to be added to the agency's bylaws. Um, the committee description is found in our bylaws in Article Six, Section Seven. And the new title is Committee, Community Advisory Committee. The Community Advisory Committee shall support the commission in further engaging DC's artistic community to, and ensuring that the authenticity of DC's cultural, culture is expressed and supported through the arts. The committee will also work to expand the reach of the humanities throughout all communities within the district, with particular attention to those historically underserved. The, the committee shall report to the board quarterly or as needed. Before I ask the chair to call for a vote, I want to state that the final Governance Committee meeting for the fiscal year will be held on September 25th, 2025. At this midi, at this meeting, the committee will review and confirm alignment with other board committees to ensure that the agency's procedures and priorities are accurately reflected in the agency's bylaws. The committee will also use this meeting to set the workflow and focus areas for the upcoming fiscal year. At this time, I would like to request that Chairman Van Lee call for a vote on the amendment to Article Six, Section Seven of our bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna call the roll. If you're in favor of, uh, this change to our bylaws, yes. If you're not, no, or abstain. Commissioner Sims? I think Carla's there somewhere. Commissioner Haberman?
Okay, can I say something before, before, be, before you call the roll? I, I need, I don't quite understand what it is.
Julianne, could you read again what the committee is intended to do?
Just explain it.
Julianne, you're muted.
Perhaps, I'm sorry about that. Um, perhaps Cecily, who is the chair of the committee, could speak, it will be chair of this new committee, could speak to that. Um, would that make more sense?
And Cecily, could you?
Um.
I see you're on baby duty at the time.
Yeah, I'm on baby duty, so. Reggie, if you could just take this moment, I'm, I'm sorry, because she was a little more pleasant.
And Grace is present here. We can have.
I was gonna say, I can.
Grace can.
Yeah, Grace, why, why?
Thank you.
I want to make, I want to make sure we get it right. So I'd rather the authors of this to speak to it versus, I have my articulation, but I think Grace will let you speak to it.
Absolutely. Thanks, everyone. Uh, and so excited to bring this work, uh, before this body. So this committee would serve as a continuation of the work. So much of what we do focuses on culture and community and building throughout spaces, um, whether that's, uh, in arts or humanities, it, that touches even the shadows of the district. We just want to make sure that, um, our work is able to continue to center around those elements. And so this is a committee that would allow us to do so, uh, knowing that we have the support of our commissioners and the support of the voice of the communities throughout the ward. This committee would come together and help provide that advisement to make sure that all of our works and all of our outreach and, and, um, all of our grant-making systems and, uh, initiatives go towards those elements of culture and bringing together culture. Uh, we highlighted that we want to make sure we're continuing to serve those who were historically underserved. So having a committee, committee that serves as that voice and gives us that advisement that has their ear to the streets and, and their eyes and, uh, open to the art that, um, we can continue to build on is something that this committee will work towards. So, uh, does that help answer your question, Commissioner Masters-Berry? Or did you want me to, uh, to elaborate a bit more?
No, that's okay. Commissioner Ward sent me a text and told me what this is about. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, great.
Good. Yeah, I mean, my, my short answer, which would be not as eloquent as, as yours was, is that many times you get so absorbed in the work that you can forget what the intent of the work should be. And just as we have artists to present at the beginning of our meetings to remind us that we are for art and humanities, this committee is going to be the conscience of the commission so that the community and the culture, DC culture in particular, is at the center of the stuff that we do. To make sure then everything we do, whether it's grants, whether it's the, the financial statements, how we put the budget together, it's our public art programs, our art education programs, all of those programs would really be centered in the community and the culture that we want to continue to invest in, in Washington DC. That, that's what I would have said, which is just another way of saying what Grace has said. So with that, I'm gonna take the roll if we could. I'll start again. Um, Commissioner Sims?
Um, yes.
Good. Commissioner Haberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Masters-Berry?
Abstain.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wharton?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim? Commissioner Brienza?
Yes.
Commissioner Minkity? Commissioner O'Neil? Commissioner Stedman?
Yes.
Good. It does pass. Thank you, thank you very much. Anything else on governance?
That is it.
Thank you, Julianne, and thank you to Governance Committee. Uh, Grants, Gretchen?
Hello, everyone. Oh, my gosh, I'm upside down, everybody. I apologize for that. Thankfully, Cecily has sent me a way to fix this. And as soon as the meeting's over, I'm going to work on it, but I'm going to take myself off of video so everybody doesn't get all dizzy. Anyhow, Gretchen Wharton, black female, glasses and an orange top and off of video, so I'm not upside down. Okay. Uh, the summer grants are open. Our FY26 Arts and Humanities Education Project, AHP. Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program, AHFP. Field Trip Experiences, FTE, and Capital Projects, DP. Grant programs opened on Wednesday, May the 28th, and they will close on Thursday, June the 26th at 10:00 PM. Please keep those, that date and the times, um, in, in front of you if you are, uh, applying for those, those, uh, grants. The panels will begin in late July. Total applications received as of today are Capital Projects, 45. Arts and Humanities Fellowship, 336. Arts and Humanities Education Project, 46. Field Trip Experiences, 23. For a total of 450 applications submitted. Um, I don't have a bar in terms of exactly how that compares to last time. But when we have a report at the next meeting and everything closes, that will have that for you. Um, you can see the descriptions of each of the actual grants. Arts and Humanities Education Project, the Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program listed below. Field Trip Experience, Field Trip Experiences and Capital Projects. These are the descriptions, and these descriptions are also found on our website. Okay, the FY26 grant panels are underway. The grant team is currently busy with panels for the following programs. General Operating Support, there are going to be 10 panels, so far 247 applicants. East Arts, two panels with 43 applicants. Project Events or Festivals, Organization and Individual, two separate ones. Twelve panels with 58 applicants. And, um, for 58 applicants and organizations, 187. So as you can see, our grants team is going to be super busy. And, um, I really applaud all of the work that they continue to do daily because they're between this and the workshops and the phone calls and the Saturday hours. They're busy all the time. And, um, my hat's off to every single one of them. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate one point you touched on, which is the paneling process. It is critical to our work, again, centered around community and culture and that which is DC, that we deploy the voices of the people, the voices of the community, the voices of our ecosystem, and how we drive towards awarding grants. And so our paneling program is critical. And it is an approach that we think adds the right sort of balance to what we do and the right, uh, competence, as well as the right credibility to what we do. I just wanted to take that minute, uh, to talk about the importance of panels. Uh, was there, the vote that we talked about, where's the vote? Is that in public art? Those are the voting grants?
There's no vote in grants.
That was in, it was in governance. Oh, the governance vote, I'm sorry. We did it, good. Okay, just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it from my notes. Any questions from the commissioners or concerns or comments on the grants report? If not, we'll go to public art. Carla?
Good afternoon, good evening. Camera on. Uh, I want to, uh, um, I want to again acknowledge the tremendous loss of, uh, our colleague and friend Ron Hubbardson. Uh, as we move ahead with the mission of the, uh, Public Arts Committee, I want to have our team member Corinne Miller provide you with a comprehensive overview of our current, uh, initiatives. Uh, her report is going to cover the significant progress across multiple programs, including our ongoing grants program uh, for public arts, building and community and arts exhibition programs. The successful completion of several major exhibitions and important developments in our collection management efforts. Notably, we're advancing our collection mapping proj, project with OCTO, developing a new one-year public arts plan for 20, FY26, and managing over 320 applications for the Art Bank Grant Program, demonstrating the continued strong demand for our services. Corinne will also address our response to the recent, I, um, OIG reports regarding the Art Bank's uh, 50-mile radius policy and provide details on our upcoming community engagement opportunities. Corinne?
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Sims. I'm Corinne Miller. Uh, I lead the Public Art Department. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a white woman with brown hair, glasses, and tonight I'm wearing a black jacket. Um, I also want to thank Director Myers and Commissioner Sims and Van Lee for acknowledging Ron Hubbardson's contributions to the agency and specifically the public art team. Uh, we're finding our way here. Um, so the Public Art Committee met on June 4th. Um, I'll go over some of the items, uh, reported and, uh, discussed during that meeting. So Commissioner Sims mentioned some of the items in overview. We have several upcoming panels over the coming months. Uh, there'll be Public Art Building Communities, the Art Exhibition Curatorial Grant Program and the Art Bank Program. So we always invite the commissioners to serve as conveners in that. Um, Commissioner Sims also invented, uh, mentioned the collection mapping project that we're working on as well. So the team continues to work on efforts to research and design a plan that will map our public art collection. Uh, and we're working with the Office of the Chief Technology Officer on that to develop a plan using ArcGIS, um, which is an interactive web-based map used by many district agencies. We've been, also been working on a public art plan. It would be a one-year plan to guide FY26 efforts. It will build on the 2021, uh, Public Art Master Plan. Uh, in absence of funding to engage in a consultant on a bigger three- to five-year plan, uh, we'll do this shorter-term tactical plan. I also want to report out on the Murals DC Program. The Department of Public Works would like to pause the Murals DC Program for FY26 and revisit a partnership with the commission for the following fiscal year and FY27. Uh, in the meantime, the public art team intends to work towards developing a pilot mural program for FY26 um, in that gap year pending funding, possible partnerships and site agreements. Uh, some larger updates on public art programs. Uh, I mentioned this at the last meeting, uh, but one of our grantees, the Nicholson Project, uh, held a dedication on Wednesday, May 14th for A Song of Suns, an installation by artist Nate Langston Palmer. That's on view for. That's on view for several months and it's worth repeating and worth visiting as well. It's a suite of works at bus stops. It's projection. It's a building-sized photograph. It's a really exciting project. And there's a, a map of all of those works via Bloomberg Connects, one of their other partners for the project. The Public Art Building Communities FY26 Request for Applications is open for just a little bit longer. It'll be open until Monday, July 21st. And then the final workshop for that program will be held on Friday, June 20th at 10:00 AM. So next I'll talk a little bit about our Art Exhibition Curatorial Grant Program. So the request for that, the request for applications for FY26 is live now through Monday, June 30th at 9:00 PM. That RFA will be used to identify two different exhibition proposals which will receive grants for curation and installation in FY26. That final workshop was held last Monday, June 9th at 12:00 noon. So we had two successful final events for our last exhibition Behind the Uniform in the 200 I Street Gallery. We had a community workshop on Saturday, May 17th, and then a closing reception that was held on Wednesday, May 21st. It was a really successful exhibition and series of public programs as well. And earlier in the meeting, we about to hear from Abby Allison McLean, one of the curators of the Queer Art Salon. It was the final FY25 Art Exhibition Curatorial Grant opened their project last Friday. It's not in the report, but the vibes were great on it. And we're thrilled to welcome that exhibition into the gallery featuring artworks that reflect a spectrum of identities and artistic expressions that celebrate the full range of queer experiences. There'll be a series of special performances and public programs held throughout the rest of the exhibition as well. So if you missed it, there's still time. I also want to mention our FY25 Color of the Curb School Safety Program. The FY25 grantees have completed all their paperwork. They have started working on their projects, including site visits to DC public school classrooms with which they were paired. So those installations will occur in the coming months. On the art collections management front, the Public Art Team is currently working on 22 requests for artworks to the Art Bank Loan Program. Work was recently installed in the Share Suite of the Mayor's Office of Latino Affairs, the Mayor's Office of Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender and Questioning Affairs, the Mayor's Office of African Affairs, the Mayor's Office of Deaf, Deaf Blind and Heart of Hearing, and DC Serve. We also recently finished framing all the FY24 Art Bank works. And then I wanted to mention that the DC Commission will also lend two artworks, one by Alonzo Davis and another by Amy Sherald for a special exhibition called Before the Americas at George Mason University. There was also a discussion during the Public Art Committee meeting and a recommendation that the Public Art Team collaborate with district agencies who are borrowing these works from the Art Bank Collection to publicize them better via social media. With that sort of marketing effort, information and experiences about the Art Bank Program could reach broader audiences. A couple of other Art Bank-related updates, the Art Bank RFA for FY26 closed on Monday, May 19th. We received, as Commissioner Sim mentioned, more than 320 applications. So the team has been hard at work vetting applications for eligibility, preparing materials and assembling panels. The team offered three workshops, open office hours, and countless hours of one-on-one technical assistance. And then finally, I want to mention some information that we reported out to the Public Art Committee regarding the Office of the Inspector General Report and the 50-mile radius. So CAH maintains that the current Art Bank guidelines comply with DC Code. Although some artists do live outside of the district and must be within the 50-mile radius for the Art Bank Program, many have their studios and their artistic practices based in and anchored in DC and work closely with the district community. The policy also supports artists who may have longstanding connections living and working in DC and were forced to relocate due to financial pressures like increased housing costs and demands on studio space. The Art Bank Program also has established goals that focus on benefiting both DC artists and DC residents through the program. Thirty percent of the applicant score is based on the artwork's value as a cultural asset to DC, ensuring that the artist is a current resident of the District of Columbia. Also, the artist's impact statement provides a significant connection to DC through their artistic career. And then i- in terms of one last data point in aggregated grant periods reviewed in the report, FY21 through FY24, CAH issued over 142 million in grants. Of this number, only 500,000 in total was issued to grantees living outside of the District of Columbia. This amounts to 0.35% of CAH Award Dollars issued during that period. So I'll stop there. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to anyone? If I could, I would just like to punctuate this Art Bank 50-mile radius issue that was raised in the OIG Report. And as Corinne has said, one, CAH feels we are in compliance with the DC Code. And two, we feel that this aligns with our mission of supporting artists. And we understand some of the reasons why an artist may, for financial reasons, have to move out of the district but still serve the district. So we, we stand pretty firm on that policy in spite of the concern that was raised in the OIG Report. Is that fair to say, Corinne? Good. Any other questions? Thank you, Corinne and the team. Once again, amazing work. Carla? Art, Arts Education, Hector?
Good evening, everyone. I'm a Latino male, white hair and a blue shirt. And I am reporting actually in the Arts Commission, Arts Education Committee that met on Tuesday, June 25th. My attendance were myself and Committee Chair and Commissioner Cora Masters-Barry. I would like to very much invite other Commissioners to participate in these, this particular meetings because it is a very important sector that we actually work with, with the community and the Arts Education Department of various schools. But anyway, the Arts Education Department plays a vital role within our agency with the oversight of two major grants, year-round initiatives and more with collaborations across nearly every department. CAH has education programs that include grant opportunities for Arts and Humanities Education Programs, AHP. Others, others support to Arts, Humanities, Arts Education service sectors that target students' grades K through 12, as well as older adults ages 50-plus. Eligible programs can also assist teachers, educational staff and teaching artists of public schools and public charter schools in the district. Applications are currently open and close on Thursday, June 26th at 10:00 PM. Field Trip Experience, FTE, supports the cost of field trip tickets, professional development opportunities for classroom educators and pre and post field trip workshops for students. Applications are currently open and close on Thursday, June 26th, also at 10:00 PM. Year-round residency programs. Celebrate the Creative Spark Residency, Creative Spark Residency, and our three session residencies, residencies for district teaching artists to provide arts and humanities-based workshops for pre-K to 12th grade students or seniors 50-plus, 20. Fiscal Year 25 resident teaching artists are at various stages of their residencies between, which began on April, in April and will conclude in September, 2025. National Endowment for the Arts and Arts and Poetry Foundation-sponsored initiative. A National Poetry Out Loud, a free high school program for the nation's youth to learn about poetry through memorization and recitation. This program actually helps high school students master public speaking skills, build self-confidence, learn about their literary heritage and compete for more than $100,000 in awards. Benjamin Bannaker Jr., Nyla Dinkins represented the district in the Mid-Atlantic Competition this year and advanced to the final seven contestants. We are proud of her and each of the School Year 25 participant schools in the district. Middle, high school youth humanities-based programming. Words on Fire Poetry Festival is the Commission's original slam poetry and spoken word competition designated for DCBS and DC Public Charter Schools 8th through 12th grade students. The one-day program will return in August and will be, and will be led by eight teaching artists who served as Poetry Out Loud coaches. The event will offer a day of in-person writing workshops, followed by student-led open mic. Details concerning date, location, how to register, we posted on our website and shared out on our website, IG, the DC Arts. Experimental learning opportunities, summer internships, five interns have joined the agency as a mayor to support the Arts Education Grants Communication, Public Arts and Resource Allocation Team. They have been a great support within each of their respective departments, supporting high, high-level initiatives, not limited to supporting with exhibitions launch, collect, collection cataloging, venue mapping, panel preparation and facility support, communication outreach, debt relief research for local artists and more. This is a very important part of our program, bringing in students ready for arts professionals. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions, anyone? Thank you, Hector. Good work again from the Arts Education Team and Committee. I want to thank my Commissioner colleagues for your continued work, dedication and presence in advancing the work of CAH. We realize and understand that this is both voluntary and time-consuming. It is, it does not go unnoticed or unappreciated. So we thank you for your time and energy and effort and commitment here. With that, I think we are nearing the end of the meeting. Is there any unfinished business? Grace has her hand up. I'm sorry, Grace? You're muted.
Yes. Hi, everyone. I just wanted to kind of continue a bit of the community conversation in saying that earlier this year, we held our first official meet and greet with the Gogo Community. And we heard from that community and we're continuing to support that community in that we have a Gogo event that will be happening in partnership with Sycamore and Oak later this week during the celebration of Juneteenth. I just wanted to thank our Executive Director, as well as our Chairperson, along with Commissioner Butler for all the support, as well as our CAH staff for their continued support. More information will be found on our social media pages, but we do want to just take that as an opportunity to celebrate community, to celebrate DC culture and DC's official music. And I just wanted to share that with everyone that's a part of our CAH community.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I add to that? It's Thursday. I think around 6:30 at Sycamore and Oak, it's on, at the end of a wonderful event that starts at 10:30 in the morning that is being sponsored by the Anna Kaffia Gogo Museum person, Ron Molden. There's a walk across the bridge. There's art. There's music. There's all of those activations that take place after the walk across the mark. And then they travel up Martin Luther King Highway, Martin Luther King Avenue and go to Sycamore and Oak. And as she said, further, yeah, she put the flower in. So it's really going to be great. You should really come over because I think there, the city is not doing a Juneteenth celebration, so it's left up to the various wards or organizations. And I think this one is a very worthy one. And thank everybody for the work they've put in, Demetrius and, and, and all the other ones. So you need to join us.
Great. Now, thank you both for that. It's important we punctuate the good work we're doing and that we show up in celebration of events like this. So following my praise to my colleagues for the time that you put in, we would love to see you at events like this. Any other unfinished business? If not, we'll move on to new business. Is there any new business? If not, I think we can close out. The next meeting of the Commission will be held Monday, July 21st, 2025 at 5:30 PM. The time is now 6:36 PM and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.